Board of Education. Please, please. Everybody. Yeah, everybody. What's on the message? Um, you take the whole thing.
Mr. Wilson here. My name is Chief here. Senator Henryman here.
Daniel Plussen.
Here.
Amy Rilswanson here. Johnson Boda.
Here.
David Sires.
Here.
Tim Swanson.
Here.
Tricia Thompson.
Okay, we have a forum for the duck business. Agenda order and approval revisions.
I just wanted to mention the board members, especially with this week being homecoming week. My plan is to dismiss the principals, excuse the principals. Sorry about that. Excuse the principals after the second discussion item, which is the annual achievement SLO report. So if there are any other items on the agenda that the board would like, the principals here for, I would suggest we move those. When I review it, I don't necessarily think it's necessary.
We read none. So, you have approval of agenda? No? Okay, we're just approving the agenda. Thank you, Amy. Thank you for that. Highlighting you.
So tonight, we have the Menominee High School Girls Golf Team. And the team, we were hoping to have with us at the last September meeting, but due to a rescheduled event, they actually were golfing during the school board meeting. So it's my pleasure to introduce Coach Jim Nelson and several of the girls' golf team members. Coach Nelson?
Don't be shy. Perfect. Good evening. Thank you for inviting us. As Mr. Sladowski said, I am Jim Nelson. I am the coach of the Menominee High School Girls Golf Team. First of all, I'd like to thank those of you who were in this role a couple of years ago when you decided to give us the green light and go ahead and all the work that Mr. Betcher did getting the team started. This is our third season as team. We started out, had nine girls come out for between varsity and JV. And the second year, we had 13 girls, I believe. This year, we have 17 girls on the team, which is a little more impressive, or sounds a little better than it is, because a lot of them never played before. But they're coming out and they're having a good time and they're getting involved in something. So it's been really good. As I said, we're in our third season. Our goals have always been learning the game of golf and having fun. We never really thought we'd be that competitive at first. It's a tough thing, but it's worked out well. We've had a lot of fun and our course has gotten better and everything like that. This season has been real good for the girls. We had a particularly wonderful gift given to us in a move-in. A very talented golfer moved into our school district, and she has helped our team quite a bit. The other girls have learned a lot from her and enjoyed having her on the team. I will let them introduce themselves in a bit. But in our conference, we hosted our conference meet. Every year, it's a big conference meet, like with the other sports in Menominee's. With Menominee's turned to host this year. That was last Thursday, no, Friday. It was supposed to be Thursday, but because of the rain, it got pushed back. And the golfers did a great job for us. And Menominee represented well, was third place in the meet, fourth place overall in the conference, which for us, we started at the bottom. We were seventh place out of seven two years ago, and sixth place, and then keep moving up. So making a little noise in the BRC. So real proud of these girls. We had, for the first time ever, an all first-team all-conference winner with Mackenzie, and even a second-team all-conference winner with Taylor down there. So it's been great. We go to regionals Wednesday up in Superior. So that's why we look the way we do. We just came from practice. So I will let the girls introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about why they're involved.
Okay, my name is Olivia Stein. I'm a junior, and I play golf, basketball, softball. And I'm in FCA and DECA, student council. And I joined golf because my older sister played the first year, and she's kind of the one that got it started. And I just enjoyed it so much that first year, I just kind of come back.
I'm Fenton Brierd. I'm a senior this year. I just moved here from Ferry Missions.
Who would that cheat it?
And I joined golf because I grew up playing in a tournament. It's pretty amazing.
My name is Taylor Bissell. I'm a junior. I'm in Tulsa Golf and Track and Field. And the reason why I joined golf is because I have a big golf family, and my parents once put aside, came up like, oh, golf. My dad's like, you're doing it.
I'm Carly Bowles. I'm a junior. I'm in golf and FA. And I don't know why I'm doing golf. First year, I really liked it, so I just keep doing it.
So anyway, that's the girls' golf teams. Thank you for the annual year's continued support, and we'll try to represent Menominee while on Wednesday up to the regionals.
Thank you.
Hello, girls.
Congratulations. All right, community communications. At least, we have a long agenda. It'll be a late night for us, so try to keep your statements to three minutes, please. So will Ben Bueller come up, please?
That's good, Ben. Yes, and Brian will keep the clock for you. Be here, blow off, just try to wrap up.
Hi, my name is Ben Bueller, and I am the president of the Menominee Area Soccer Association. We're closely with the middle school and high school coaches in our efforts to provide streamlined soccer programming to the hundreds of families who participate in this community. We currently share a soccer complex with the middle school teams, and we have recently needed to expand their use to River Heights in order to accommodate our growing numbers. This sports complex field could be an additional option for us, but it's currently only available on a limited basis because of the number of people vying for its use. Like to expand the potential of that field to accommodate other groups, including the youth soccer teams. I would imagine it would open up potential for a number of other uses as well, but I can only speak to how it would positively impact Menominee students and families who play soccer in security. I appreciate your time.
Jane Strong, please.
I'm also here to request that we consider going to phase two of the complex.
Okay, and Scott Strong, please.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm here for the phase two of the soccer sports facility and looking to find out. I know there's a coach that would love to be here. There's two coaches that would love to be here. Mr. Olson, your track coach, who's at the cross country right now, who would love to have lights. He's made that known to us as parents. I'm a parent. I have four, we have four sons that are going to Menominee. Two graduated in college, one's a junior, and one will be in ninth grade next year. Mr. Olson has definitely made it known to us that he'd love to have the lights. And the reason why is because you can host your conference, your sectionals in all regions, track meets, that you can't right now because of you run out of light. You now degrade the host, because as you see in your track program, not this year, but the year before, in one big rivers. Quite an accomplishment considering the program that we have here, considering we run out of games. We're mostly here to support that. We also have another coach, Megan Frank, the men's soccer coach. Can't be here because right now, we're having a team meal, and she's there with the team. It would be important for us to have lights for there so that we can also have scheduled games at different times. We have a very small team this year, and I don't think we're small because she's holding people accountable, which is great to see from our point of view. The kids that used to be able to play soccer that didn't put the effort in, were given a chance. Now she's saying, you need to work, and I love that. And I think it's very important to hold kids accountable. You see it at other schools. I will say Memorial, if you don't lift at Memorial, you don't play soccer. That would be considered the same thing for Labuda and football here. So we've got shortened our notices here. What would be beneficial for having the lights is that we could play JV at five and varsity at seven. Our varsity does need that. We have seen games where we run out of players and we've had to pull JV from other games who come running across. It happened at North because some of our kids got injured. Having that five to seven would allow us to have the JV kids that are available to be there so we don't have that issue. We're competitive. We finally won a game under six years. Please keep us going in competitiveness as a soccer parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Board members, superintendent, community. If anything.
I do one more. I was at the Packer Viking game last week, unfortunately. Well, I guess it could have been worse. It could have been better. But thrilled to see the Menominee football high school quarterback and two receivers. I had no idea they were going to be there, but all of a sudden, at halftime from the Menominee Mustangs, and they actually, they had a throwing and catching competition against Hudson, and Menominee ended up winning it. So it was, they did our school proud, and I was very impressed to see them there. So, cool to those students that were involved, and I'm not sure how it got arranged, but it was nice PR for the school.
Great. Anyone else? Joe.
Just briefly, first of all, last meeting we had, there were problems with the board software. We use a software program that houses all the information for our board meetings, and there's been trouble with it the last, I don't know, about three months or so. We've run into little glitches. We did make contact with the company. They have issued us a credit. They've also said that they're well aware of the issue and that they have hired some outside support to try to fix the issue. We're very hopeful that problems are behind us, but for anybody who causes inconvenience, we certainly apologize about that. Last week, I had the pleasure to be in Madison for the State of Education address, and very encouraged by what Tony Ubers, the state superintendent, said about the DPI budget proposal. Certainly, there's going to be a lot of back and forth before any kind of budget is set, but it's a very robust proposal for public education, $600 million more for special education, which should be about $4,000 per child, and $64 million more for student mental health funding. Both of the highlights that really stuck out to me. It's always a real pleasure to see all the educators, some of the educators from the state in the capital. Ann Hasi, who was a fifth-grade teacher at Wakanda Elementary, she was a Teacher of the Year for the state, so she gets invited back every year. And they have a special council of Teachers of the Year that get together and talk about education in our state and develop recommendations. So it's always fun to see Mrs. Hasi, and I also noted that Tricia Thompson from the school board was there. So it's great to see our school district represented.
Good. Okay. Moving on, personnel consent agenda. Item A, action to approve the personnel actions. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Let's see. All right, Amy, to second that. So, I need each discussion. Series nine, let's go.
Honey, did you knock? Frank. Can I get just a voice call?
Oh, sure. Yes. For, yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, discussion items, relink, and policy review. Item A, student enrollment update.
So last Friday was our third Friday of September roll count, and Tony, I can go ahead and give you the good news there.
So it looks like our enrollment is up from previous years, as you can see in that screen in the attachment. I think the bottom number is like 3441. That's actually the number of physical bodies that we have in attendance. So if you go around and you would come, each student in attendance, that's the number we would have came up with on the date that we did this. But as you know, this got to put into work on Thursday, and we still had enrollees coming in on Thursday, and students will be out on Thursday. Then there's lots of calculations that we do with the third Friday in September, so that actual report does not sound that. Because, of course, the students are gone on Friday, you can still come if they attend this, you know, a day before or a day after. And then also, for example, like our 4K students, they're not counted as one, they're counted as .6. So there's lots of those calculations going in. And then also, our open enrollment in and out needs to be calculated, and that portal does, did open until today. So that's, they wait till after the third Friday to open that up, so you can enter all of that information in there. So there's lots of work that has to be done in order for us to get that shared third Friday number. And I think that is according to the state, I think on October 5th, I want to say. So, but it does look like our enrollment is up, if you look at just our student bodies. And as you can see, previous last year, that report, it was 3373. This year, 3441. So it does look like we are up as far as our enrollment.
So the way that school finance works in our state, enrollment is one of the key indicators for how our budget will be set here at the end of October. So anytime you see that enrollment tick up, from a financial standpoint, that's a good thing. The challenge that comes with increasing enrollment is to make sure that we have all the services that are needed. And that's another thing that we're working with our principals. We'll be meeting again tomorrow. There are a few class sizes that we're tracking closely. Right now, I think everything is where it needs to be, but also, often times, we'll have some students move in that might have some special needs or need some personalized learning. So we'll be continuing to watch that closely, and we'll report back to the board in October if any adjustments to staffing needs to be made.
How does our 4K compare to last year? We're 258 this year.
It's slightly up from last year.
So, but the 68 students that were up is not, I mean, that's pretty legit. It's not just a bigger 4K.
No, it's not just a bigger. I think we were, last year, at this time, we reported like 260 or more. So we were 250 or, yeah.
So pretty close.
Pretty close, but.
It's encouraging to see from a board perspective, because I don't, some schools have declining enrollment, and it causes some major issues. So that's encouraging.
Well, especially when you factor in how summer school has grown, that goes into our enrollment calculation for our finances. So we definitely should see a pretty good size of enrollment for this year.
Awesome. Jim?
The boundary changes we made with Oaklon and Wakanda, how has that worked out? Have they balanced pretty well? Or is one of them higher than the other, or how's that?
There, I would say, when you look at the entire elementary level, it's way more balanced than what it was. There are a couple of classes at Oaklon that we're tracking pretty closely, because during the transition, there were some families that decided to move to the different schools, some that didn't. But all in all, I'd say that boundary change has gone very well.
Any other questions? We have right now four classes in both kindergarten and first grade at River Heights. Do you see us having to make a change next year at second grade, or?
Dave, what I would say is that we have a lot of in and out at River Heights, so it's pretty hard to predict what next year will be. We have prioritized lower class sizes at those early elementary grade levels, but certainly we'll monitor it as we look throughout the year. Typically, our January counts is less than it is in the fall, and I think that's with some of the transition of families due to work or other family needs. So I'd say after January, we'll have a better idea what staffing might look like, or insection might look like for next year.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you're monitoring, because it looks like first grade at Oaklon is overloaded or being closed.
Yeah, that's the area most concerned.
Good questions, anyone? Okay, move on. Item B, the annual achievement report.
So Brian, go ahead and lead this, please.
All right, so, once a year, we come forward and share the goals that were set at the district level as well as the building level related to student learning objectives. Last year, as a board, you asked for some follow-up as to how we did on the goals. So included in the three-year's report is a summary narrative based off of last year's goals at the building level and reporting out on how we did on those. And then, obviously, we, principals and our team sat down and took a look at where we were at last year and ultimately where we'd like to see some emphasis or some growth this year. And each building then uses their building leadership team to identify the goals that they want to prioritize within their building. And when we take a look at student achievement, take a look, in some cases, at attendance, and also student behavior. So at the building level, you're going to see some goals, not just on ELA or math, but you'll see some combined goals. Some buildings will prioritize that they are looking for an increase in overall achievement. Sometimes, overall growth from grade level to grade level, increasing. Attendance rates are decreasing, absenteeism, or they may have prioritized behavior. So you're going to see some variance building to building as to what those teams have identified as far as priorities. When we take a look at where we ended last year and are looking at this year, some things that we identified as strengths or things to celebrate at our building level as well as a district level, we continue to set what I would identify as ambitious but reasonable goals at each of the buildings and at the district level as well. What we are seeing is our literacy and math achievement levels remain relatively stable from year to year. We're not seeing a lot of swing one way or another from year to year. So we see that as a nice constant as we go through and look at improvement planning. And we're seeing some nice math growth year to year since we rolled into our new math resource at the elementary level. It's actually led to some changes that we're piloting at the middle school this year related to math and some resources and improvements. As far as the areas that we ID'd for growth or some need, we'd still like to see our overall student achievement grow and improve. What we are seeing is, in reference to a state comparable, we tend to be either just a little bit above or a little bit below year to year. And given the growth that we've seen, we'd like to see that continue to increase, ultimately see us go above the state on a more consistent basis. Also, when we look regionally and comparing ourselves to some comparable schools, you know, so we've seen some, we've seen growth in that area, but that's an area that we want to continue to work on. And our staff at the building level and our principals have identified some ways to do that as we've gone through. Also, we've identified that we want to improve or refine the local measures that we're using so we can report out on more than just in the ELA or math area, which tends to be where we're prioritizing. You'll see one of the buildings, if you dig in, they identified a science goal this year. We have a new science resource that we're using, so they've done some work in that area to prioritize that as a growth area. And then, as far as what we're doing, we've included data in the report that's in there, but, you know, our K8 has really identified literacy, specifically in the area of writing as an area that they're focusing in on this year. And we'll be collecting some baseline data as we go forward. We feel there's a strong link between students' ability to write about what they're learning and reading, and actually increasing in all areas of literacy, so that's been prioritized. Last year, we did some work, 612, specific to strategies preparing students for college and career readiness, in alignment with ACT, with some PD workshops. So those staffs are in the process of implementing that work this year. We expanded our math interventions and our resources in that area, which is an area that we identified for some growth in prior years. At the middle school, they have incorporated a daily schedule that will have some time for intervention as well as enrichment activities on a daily basis for all students. That wasn't necessarily hitting all students, so that was a nice change. And then, specific to literacy, one of the areas that we've identified that we want to see some growth in or some improvement in, we're piloting some resources related to phonics at K1 in primary to try and meet those needs. But if you do go into the infographic that was shared, you can see not only the report from last year's goals, but also those goals that were set for this year, and a couple of things that I would like to highlight or point out. At the district level, again, because we have seen, you know, some growth towards prior year goals, we've actually kept our achievement level goal the same rolling into the 18, 19 school year, because we haven't hit exactly where we want to go with that area. But because of that and some of the work that we've done, we've actually upped the amount of growth that we're looking for year to year, because we feel that we have kind of hit the point where in order to make, take that next step as far as overall achievement, we're going to have to see a little bit more growth from here. So that is a piece that we've upped as far as going into next school year. Again, as far as the individual buildings, you know, they then take a look at what we've identified as priority areas that are shared from a district level and then go back to their buildings, and then they will develop their strategy for how they best feel that they can work with their staff and their students to work toward those overall goals. So I don't know if there are specific questions that you would have for me related to this, or if there are specific items related to the buildings, the building principals are able to speak to those as well.
I would like to see the school improvement plan changed to school success plan. I've said this many years in a row, and it always seems to come back, the improvement plan may say that. Improvement seems to me just a kind of a, I don't know, sort of a negative connotation. You know, we put teachers on plans for improvement, put principals on plans for improvement, and that seems sometimes as a negative. And so I would like to just see maybe the language change. So that would be one thing. And the other thing I want to ask is, do you use something besides testing, testing, testing to figure out? I mean, is that the only way that you discover the achievement and what's happening? Because there's so many other measures out there. And if you're only testing at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, and it's only a, you know, like a one-day or two-day thing, that doesn't seem to mean that that's valid for the whole year.
No, one, I like the idea of the school success plan, the school improvement or SLO language that we utilized for a few years, but that's a great suggestion. As far as the measures that we use, in the case of this particular report, it's a combination, depending on the goals that the buildings have prioritized, either specific to achievement. So yes, taking a look at various assessment measures that are used, but not just one assessment that we're using. So taking a look at different pieces. But then, as far as, when you take a look at engagement factors, one of the primary pieces that's identified to measure how effective you are at student engagement is taking a look at attendance rates. So we do take a look at that. The schools that have identified behavior rules or PBIS rules, they will take a look at not just student testing, in that case, they'll take a look at officer referrals and rates that way. As we move forward into the fall, as we start to get our state-level assessment results forward, our school report card that will come in November, when those will be released, those report cards, if you remember last year, we brought forward what we refer to as Accountability Report Card 2.0, which was essentially the other side of the story, and we'll continue to do that this year. Things as far as student activity, participation rates, taking a look at various things at the elementary level, whether it be participation in things like science olympiad, you know, middle school, we include things like, you know, activities like our school plays, students who are involved in other extracurriculars. Because we do feel there is a lot more than just the student achievement side when you take a look at academic achievement. That being said, that is one of the pieces that we do know that we are responsible, obviously, as far as reporting out on, but that Report Card 2.0 was a piece that we'll be bringing back this year. I'm actually really excited to share, and we will give a little more detail when we go through the report cards this year. The state has, right now, it looks like it will be a three-year phase-in process of some expanded data collection that we'll be reporting to the state. This first year, one of the things that we'll be reporting on is, they refer to them as college career readiness indicators, so students who are participating in
that seems sometimes as a negative, and so I would like to just see maybe the language changed. So that would be one thing. And the other thing I wanna ask is, do you use something besides testing, testing, testing to figure out? Um, I mean, is that the only way that you discover the achievement and what's happening? Because there's so many other measures out there, and if you're only testing at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, and it's only a, 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 you know, like a one day or two day thing, that doesn't seem to mean that that's valid for the whole year.
No, um, that, look, one, the, I like the idea of the school success, success plan, um, the, um, school improvement or SLO, uh, language that, that we've utilized for a few years, but that's a great, a great suggestion. Uh, as far as the measures, uh, that we use, uh, in the case of, of this particular report, it's a combination depending on the goals that the buildings have prioritized, either specific to achievement, so yes, um, taking a look at various assessment measures that are used, but not just one assessment that we're using, so taking a look at different pieces. Uh, but then, as far as, um, you, when you take a look at engagement factors, one of the primary pieces that are, that's identified to measure how, um, effective you are at student engagement is taking a look at attendance rates, so we do take a look at that. Um, the schools that have identified behavior goals or PBIS goals, um, they will take a look at, um, not just student testing, yeah, in that case, they'll take a look at officer referrals, um, and, and rates that way. As we move forward into the fall, as we start to get our state level assessment results forward in our school report card, um, that will come in November when those will be, um, released, uh, those, those report cards, if you remember last year, we brought forward what we referred to as accountability report card two point O, uh, which was essentially the other side of the story, um, and we'll continue to do that this year. Um, things as far as student activity, uh, participation rates, taking a look at, uh, various things at the elementary level, whether it be, uh, participation in things like science olympiad, um, you know, middle school, we include things like, you know, activities like our school plays, uh, students who are involved in other, um, extracurriculars, because we do feel there is a lot more than just the student achievement side when you take a look at, um, at, at academic achievement. Uh, that being said, that is one of the pieces that, um, we do know, um, that we are responsible, obviously, as far as reporting out on, um, but that report card two point O was, was a piece that we'll be bringing back this year, and I'm actually really excited to, um, to, to share, and we will give a little more detail when we go through the report cards this year. Uh, the state has, um, what right now looks like will be a three-year phase in, um, process of, um, some expanded data collection that we'll be reporting to the state. Um, this first year, one of the things that we'll be reporting on is, they refer to them as college career readiness indicators, so students who are participating in, um, in, in youth apprenticeships, um, state school certi- certificate completers at the high school level, that data will be collected this year, so we can report out on that. Um, that will be, you know, consistent across all districts, not just something we're doing locally. Um, and then, moving forward, there also may be, um, collecting information on student volunteer rates, um, at, at the high school level. Um, so the state recognizes, and that's all part of ESSA, uh, when we take a look at every student succeeds act, some of the increased, um, you know, requirements of that. Uh, but again, that's gonna be a three-year phase in on that, and we had prioritized a couple of years before we started looking at what that would be, because there is more than just a student test score, our students are more than that. Um, you know, that being said, when we take a look at, um, the areas that we have self-identified, um, probably, um, that we have, you know, some, some opportunities for, for improvement, you know, those are the ones that a lot of times at the building levels and, and district level, um, have come forward. But yeah, um, you know, taking a look at more of those things is something that we, um, we, we have prioritized, it's just not part of this particular report.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I guess, no, I don't have a problem with the snapshot, it's, it's a snapshot of time when a student starts and how they finish the year. Uh, one of the thing I noted too, a graduation rate, you know, my mom has been very strong in that, improving year to year over ninety-seven percent on the last report here, but, uh, I guess a couple of things. Did you have anything further, Amy, that you were thinking of specifically that you'd like to see?
Well, something what he said, you know, I think was, was really good. Um, and I also agree that, you know, that you, when you do, when you, I guess, work with the whole child, you know, in all areas, especially the social-emotional learning piece, which I know we're really trying to work towards. I think when, when those things are in place, you're gonna see, um, some better scores or whatever, but I still, testing is just something that I, I, I've always been bug by, because I was never a good test taker, but, you know, I excelled in school and it was.
And one of the things that, um, you know, our, our team that went to the Model Schools Conference, um, that was a very key component, um, there are three R's they refer to, and we heard our team talk about, that rigor relevance and relationships, um, and how you balance all three of those, um, you know, and at times you need to overemphasize one because of a scenario with a particular child, um, but then what you do to keep the other two in balance, and, and that's a piece that we're looking at, and we're looking at even, you know, growing in our reporting on how do we better report on all three of those aspects. You know, rigor, you know, that's our student achievement, the relevance, it's the engagement piece, the growth from year to year, that type of thing, the relationships. Uh, right now, in the report that's in front of you, um, you know, the, the PBIS piece is, is one aspect that, that reports on that. And then some of our reports that you'll see, um, over the next, um, few months, between now and the end of November, related to student learning and growth and participation are gonna, I think, hit on some of those pieces that you're asking for, so.
Okay.
I guess the second part is that we see a fair amount of variation between individual schools. Are you seeing certain things that you can take from, is it a com- is it a factor of the population of the school, or, you know, are there economic factors or things that play into it, or are there things that you can take from some of the schools that are performing better than average and help with, help out at other schools, or?
I, I think you, you hit on, um, several of the things, and the answer is yes to all of that. I mean, there, there absolutely are things that you, you know, that, that can apply universally across all of our, our schools. Um, we, and, and when we take a look at, uh, schools regionally as well as, um, schools and districts that compare very closely demographically with us, um, one of the key threads that comes across all is when you have high levels of student engagement, you tend to see an increased, um, levels of student achievement and growth. Uh, yeah, and, um, really, when I take a look at, one of the things our districts has done a very good job on over the years, it has been on growth year to year. Um, and then, when you get into some of the other factors, socioeconomic status, there, there is a link, and, and we did a self-analysis, I believe it was about three years ago, to really dig into, was what we were seeing locally, matching with what some of that state and national data was showing, and it was. Um, so when we take a look at, at some of, you know, how we allocate some of our resources, um, you know, we do have some, uh, resources that are allocated more heavily based off of socioeconomic status, because the research does support, uh, that you have greater gaps that you have to, to, to match that way. Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate you comparing contrasting from last year to this year, and then being able to take the ones from last year and how you can grow and get better at them, so I just wanted to point that it's just, it's a nice snapshot.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Dan, before we move on, I just wanted to point out, um, and I wanted to thank Brian and the other directors for, for the work on this, uh, but I also really wanna point out all the work that the principals do. Um, this is the culmination of a ton of work, uh, between the staff at the building level and then the principals working with the staff, and then, in most cases, Brian is then, uh, Brian Boar and/or our curriculum coaches in both the area of math and English language arts. This is the culmination of a ton of, of effort and conversation, and, uh, Brian and I are in the office high-fiving each, each other, 'cause we're so happy that these discussions are taking place. And I think Amy's point is very well taken, that it needs to be well-rounded. It is so much more well-rounded than it was even five years ago in terms of the growth that our buildings are working towards, so we're just really happy that we're having a clear direction of where we're going. I think we all understand that if we don't have a clear goal, it's gonna be hard to hit it, and, um, having that target and working towards it is critical for the success of our kids.
So I'm wondering, um, as some of the schools identified, uh, some of those relationship goals, um, are we going to see more schools than, uh, setting goals in that area?
So the short answer to that question is, it really depends on what ends up being prioritized within that building. Um, you know, when you take a look at, um, you know, a building that has a high rate of behavioral referrals, and a high rate is, it's, it's very subjective, you know, high for one building may not, may be low for another building, um, but, you know, when they stack up all the priorities, uh, what I think is a healthy conversation is when we see the goals shift from year to year. Things don't necessarily fall off as being prioritized, but it may not be the number one or number two priority. Part of it is, you know, um, you know, how many things do we prioritize as a goal, and at what point does something just become part of what we do, um, in a building? And if a building has prioritized, uh, a PBIS goal to reduce the number of major infractions that happen, and they get within that target area that they've identified, whatever that is, and they're able to meet that target for a handful of years, you know, to me, then it just becomes, becomes part of what they do. And while they may not identify that as a particular goal, they're gonna continue to monitor it, and then if it starts to creep back up, they may, it may be something that then they prioritize later on. Uh, you'll notice some, some buildings, you know, in this case, uh, some of them have dropped math off as a goal. It doesn't mean that they're not gonna continue to focus on math, it just means that they, they feel they've hit the target that they were shooting for and are sustaining that and are gonna focus in on some areas that they feel are higher priorities. Uh, but I do think with the emphasis on social-emotional learning, um, it's not gonna be, um, surprising to see some goals, whether they show up on this individual report or not, um, that are focused on, um, you know, on, on those relationships and the connections of students.
Yep.
I just wanted, kinda reiterate what Joel said, and a thank you to the principals. It's not easy to put everything that, that you do out for everybody to see and, and judge you and that, but, uh, at least, you know, this is a way that we can look and see where we are doing well, what we need to improve, so thank you guys for going through it, and appreciate that.
One other question I have, um, where schools are identifying a high need in a specific area, are we providing extra resources for them?
Uh, so the short answer is yes, um, and what those resources look like may vary depending on the goal or the need. In some cases, it's professional development. Um, you know, when you take a look at the buildings that have identified writing as a priority, quite frankly, all of our eleventries and our middle school, and not that our high school hasn't developed, identified writing as a priority, just as far as, again, where that's prioritized on the goals. Um, so one of the things that we, um, have spent time beginning of the year, for example, the middle school, um, they had a team of teachers last year that attended some off-site professional development on very specific writing strategies, and then those teachers presented back to the staff at the start of the school year during open in-service on what those strategies were. And then our literacy coach, Tara Ellison, will be working with the staff, uh, at various points during the year on helping to interpret the data that they're collecting. Um, same thing with that, um, K1 phonics piece, um, you know, she's working with them on that, um, our instructional math coach, again. And so one of the things that we've committed to is, um, making sure that we can provide support in district, why we have those instructional coaches, um, also, uh, by sending that team to the Model Schools Conference, pre-representative group, um, as far as that is concerned. Uh, but then again, one of the things that I referenced as an action step, this year we're implementing several, um, new intervention tools in the area of math, um, primarily at the elementary, and they're sneaking their way into the middle school depending on the skill level that the student has. Uh, we had identified about three years ago that we, uh, had an imbalance between the amount of resources that we had identified for meeting struggling students' needs in the area of math, as in comparison to literacy. So that's really been a three-year process, and we were thankful last year that we were able to prioritize some of that at the tail end of the year, um, get those in, so, yes.
Great, and, and I applaud you for the, the, uh, early, um, phonics emphasis, I think that's wonderful. So, yeah, kudos to the principals and the teachers for all the work they've done. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
So at this time, principals, um, I think the, uh, homecoming festivities start, uh, they already started actually with games and refreshments at Wilson Park, and at seven o'clock, the pep band's going to perform, and I know there's tons of other activities this week, so thank you, and you're welcome to stay, but you're certainly excused.
All right, um, policies, seven fifty ones, transportation services, second reading.
So if it's okay with the board, I'll group these two together. Um, because of some of the technology issues we had at the last meeting, I thought it would be appropriate to put these back on this meeting, although they have been in front of the board now, I think, before, three or four meetings in a row. Uh, I read through the changes last time, I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but, um, basically, our policies are in alignment with what's recommended by the School Board Association, they're similar to other transportation policies in schools around our area, there's, there's a few, um, differences depending on the school district. Uh, we are suggesting a couple of modifications, um, having to do to make sure that our policy reflects our practices, especially with the four-year-old kindergarten, uh, but otherwise, um, the updated policies will be on the board agenda, uh, in October for your approval. Any questions or additional suggestions?
Okay, all right, moving on, policy seven thirty-one point three one.
It's interesting, um, the drone policy is, is favorably called. Uh, if you recall, um, we did some research on drones a few years back, and our liability coverage at the time did not cover drones, so we had a pretty restrictive policy due to that fact. And now insurance policies have changed a little bit, our carrier has changed, and the use of drones now is covered. So we've modified the policy a little bit to relax it, to allow for the use of drones, uh, with permission. Uh, there still is some, um, permission that needs to be granted, especially in the event of a WIAA activity or sporting event, uh, just to make sure everyone's safe. I, I did some investigation on Friday night at Hudson, uh, when their football team came running on the field, they had a drone following a football team, I'd never seen that before, uh, but we are recommending, uh, the relaxed policy, uh, for your approval next time. Any questions or suggestions?
Okay.
Yeah, um, in the policy under section eight, it says, "Use of drones requested for a project that has a clear educational objective." I wonder if the language would be more precise, instead of saying educational objective, somehow it tied into correlative curriculum rather than edu- is it educational, I don't know, you know, it's pretty broad how you define that, and when you start drawing lines in that domain, do you wanna make that more precise?
Yeah, I took that language off of sample policy, and, well, I think it, it's nice to have some clear guidelines, it's also nice to have some flexibility. I think between the teachers and principals and myself, I think we can, um, try to decide if it's education or not. We certainly can make it more prescriptive if the board would like, I'd, I'd be worried about cornering, cornering us a little bit though if we make it too prescriptive. What, what do you think in general?
Well, I'm just thinking if you say, sure, this is great for science, but this isn't good for English, and you're gonna, yeah, it's, I, I understand why it's one-on-one, yes, or one-onone, so that's kinda why, it's the guidance are more clear, and then people understand. I guess that's my whole thing.
The, the only concern I have tying it to curriculum is, you know, maybe it's an engagement piece, and even though engagement's, you know, part of the overall curriculum, it might be more light work for the teachers to try to prove that it's, um, tied to the curriculum, whereas maybe it's a, a reward or some sort of engagement piece that they're working with, with their kids. Definitely open to suggestion, I don't know, anybody else? Do you feel pretty strongly about it?
I just like, it's like, really, I guess, you know, it's the thing is, the one person gets back, one person's happy, and, and that's my concern, but I would, uh, consider it a little.
I'm, I'm not anticipating too many denials, um, if it's something to do with, with a teacher request.
Do we have, we currently have drones right now, do we still have two, or?
I believe there's still two in the district, but they probably need to be charged up.
They'll probably have to be.
Yeah, well, no, a lot of drones still fly, but I can tell you the example, I, I know our, um, new tech ed program at the middle school, um, there's some really neat curriculum opportunities, and actually, CISA eleven is having a training on this, and they have these mini drones, and I know my sixth grade son has one, he can fly the thing around the house, and he can land it on the, on top of the ceiling fan, and then fly it back down and flip it, and it, it's amazing. But we want, we want it to be more than just playing with a drone, um, they actually have some programming where you can use a computer and program the flight path and everything. Uh, I really see that as a neat opportunity for kids, and, um, that's why I think we need to relax the policy.
Will this allow drones from students to be brought in where the policy exists now, or will only be school drones that they use?
I think there's a potential for someone to bring a drone in, but it would have to be run through the principal, and, um, it's not quite as relaxed if it's not a school drone, there has to be some, depending on the type of drone it is, the capabilities of the drone, I, I think there'd have to be some, um, checks on it.
Yeah, I can't imagine some kid whipping on a drone on a distract hack on recess and flying, and I don't think we would have that.
I think the policy's still covering that situation.
You will.
I think they're, they're married you.
I think you'd be amazed how many kids have drones.
Right.
Yeah.
I should, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talent in the, with kids that have them too. I'm saying that, so.
Yeah, I could see maybe a drone club or something.
Well, that, and that's exactly what we're thinking for the middle school.
Even from a photography standpoint, they use them a lot, yeah, agriculture and different things like that.
Yeah, that's for some of the privacy concerns that, that get addressed by the policy comment. Anything else?
All right, thank you. Um, item F, final review of the budget.
So Mrs. Dieter, um, is, was not able to be here tonight, uh, but she gave the board a pretty good narrative of the final budget revisions. Uh, just a couple of key points to, to tune into. Uh, first of all, so for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget, uh, when all the revisions are made, the final budget ends with two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents of more revenue than expenditures. And, um, the major changes that, that caused the final budget transfers are, are due to, um, an increase in Fund twenty-seven or specialized grants, uh, increases in the Fund thirty-nine debt service refinancing, an increase in the Fund eighty, minority middle school age co-curricular activities, and, um, some increased revenue to, due to federal grants. Uh, those are the major pieces in those final budget transfers.
I have one, Joel, and the debt service refinance, it's a big number, and I know when we refinanced, we, we're talking over two million dollars in savings from the refinancing for our debt service, is this part of that, that six hundred thousand dollar refinance?
Yeah, the, the budget had to be adjusted to fix that. Um, I think the total savings was one point seven five, if I remember correctly. I would rather have Leah answer the specifics to that.
We can do that when we bring it back.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, item G, discuss the two thousand nineteen health insurance renewal.
So we've been doing work with our, uh, insurance consultants, and as you can see, uh, we received a favorable renewal, uh, offer, and, um, right now, our claims are running below funding levels, so that's a good thing, that means that we're having a positive fund balance in our- That means that we're having a positive fund balance in our health insurance fund. And right now our stop-loss renewal came in below market trend at about nine percent. Market trend is anywhere between 13 and 15 percent. So when we look at where our claims are sitting and we look at where the renewal is offered, we are recommending that the board approve the renewal. This would be in place for January first. That means we would keep the same insurance plan that we have now. There wouldn't be any major plan design changes and having that consistency for staff is something that we've heard a lot of clear as being very important. We do plan to meet with the Health Medical Insurance Committee on Thursday and run through this with them. I'm sure they'll be very happy when we see the results. Any questions about any of the figures that the board was provided? So then we'll plan on bringing this back on October eighth for the board's final approval.
Okay, moving on, item H, Home Sweet Menominee Program.
At the last meeting, Dan Osterman attended and gave a presentation about the Home Sweet Menominee Program. And since that time, he also had an opportunity to present to various groups across the community. He also presented to the Greater Menominee Development Corporation and they have settled in on different funding levels and I attach that for the board. Certainly, there's a lot of differences, different options that the board could consider. At this point, one idea that the board could consider would be to designate $50,000 from last year's excess revenue and that would allow us to buy into the program at a good funding level and provide all of our employees the opportunity for the interest free loan that'll become available on January first. Any thoughts by the board on that?
I think, you know, as we talked about last week, or two weeks ago, at that board meeting, it's certainly an encouraging program, encouraging families to move to their area and staff and housing to be a long-term partners with the, with the community. If they had a excess of people interested in, say, we provided $50,000 in grants or grant money towards this and then we had eight or 10 different teachers that applied for, how would they go about sorting that out?
At this point, they haven't put any kind of cap for any organization. But what I can tell you is that the Greater Menominee Development Corporation has pledged and actually has made the payment to the community foundation for the first $100,000. The city council has already voted to maintain the program. The city already has some other housing programs that are available for residents. And my understanding from people going around the table is that several other businesses are also going to be involved with this. I think if you see that much involvement, you'll see more businesses step up. We did talk about, you know, what is the possibility, how many people could actually participate? And one of the programs that they've somewhat modeled this after, or at least seen a program similar to this, would be in Wausau. And I believe they started around between 20 and 30 people and I think it may have gotten as high as 50 at one point. So this has a potential to grow, but I think with the amount of support that at least I've heard from the other local entities, I think it'll be funded well enough that pretty much anybody who wants to participate will be able to.
I see we have the option of putting in on our charge card.
I would not recommend that. But in all seriousness though, I mean, I would appreciate some feedback from the board. Do you think that funding level is appropriate? Any concerns or other ideas?
I think $50,000 is fair for now. I would suggest that we kind of, because, you know, we have 10 new employees that come to the district and they all want a loan, you know, or something. It might be interesting to see how that plays out as far as numbers, you know, of people that want to apply or something like that, that would be able to.
I think that makes a lot of sense to start with $50,000 and also see how many other community partners participate in this. And I think we monitor, we could always bring it back and talk about whether or not our funding is adequate.
Or you go be conservative and do it the other way and do less and then contribute more later. What, is that another option?
It definitely is an option. The one concern I would have is that we know that we had more revenue than expenses from 2017, 2018. We've had a history of doing that, but I just, I would hate to go into this with the idea that we would have more in the future and then have to cut something to come up with those funds. I'd rather, I'd rather make the one-time payment now, let me know we have that funding available.
All right, I'm sorry. Funding level that we give doesn't affect the number of our employees that can apply for the program?
No, it really doesn't. But at the same time, I think we would want to make a good faith effort and if we did have 10 people participating within the first year, I would think that maybe we would probably relook at our funding available. Because ultimately, I think we'll want this program to succeed and not just get the highest value we can.
So, you know, we're talking with excess revenue, you know, about this and the sports complex. Do we have any word on the resource officer? You know, if that has been approved by the city council and, you know, I'm just thinking, if we have access money, could we put more money towards the resource officer? You know, I'm just thinking aloud.
That's a really good question. It would be a whole other discussion to talk about where the city is at. My understanding is that they're in the legislative process, they're in a different cycle than we are. My understanding is that the city council is very supportive of it. I don't know that there's been a commitment though for the 60/40s to it yet. But what I could tell you is that would be a different funding source. We would be looking at using Fund 80 for that, this would be Fund 10 general fund dollars. Good question.
What was the repayment on this? This is a loan, it's not running the, so, would they repay it? Do they repay it back into the community foundation then? Is that how it works?
Actually, I think the city is the manager of the loan, the actual loan. But the community foundation is the fiscal entity funding the city. And there are some stipulations where if improvements are made and such, I know a portion of that loan can be forgiven.
But still, a portion is paid back and so as those, as people pay back in, they provide money, seed money for other families.
Right.
And they want to use as well.
Right. Yeah, I don't think that this would be an annual ask. I see this as a one-time ask and then depending on involvement, depending on the success of the program, perhaps it could be an additional ask someday in the future. But I think this would be a substantial investment that hopefully would be a long-term play for us.
The neat thing that I see is the ability to, if you have, if you have a teacher that's, you know, maybe thinking about it, this is something that you could put out there, that you could draw some pretty good talent into the district as well.
And a lot of, a lot of the local businesses are talking about it. Certainly they care about the community and, you know, the success of the community is everyone's first goal, but a lot of their priority is the recruitment and retention of staff and that's one of our priorities too. But being a school district and having a lot of our finances, just like tonight we heard, being impacted by enrollment, not only can this help us with staffing, it also can help us on the enrollment and so I, I see this as a one win for the school district.
Any other questions, discussion?
Well, thank you for the direction. I will plan on bringing this on the October eighth agenda for approval.
Okay. Moving on, item I, Phase Two of the MHS Sports Complex.
So obviously there's been a lot of interest in this since the last meeting. I know there's been some emails and today I was able to load in a couple more emails that were shared. We've also heard public comment on this and basically I just need some direction from the board if this is something that the board would like us to continue to move forward on or wherever the board may be at.
I guess one of the things that I appreciate the public support here tonight for, I agree with you, I think it's something that needs to be done for the district as well. You know, we've had the complex built for about three years now, two to three years and I think it needs to be, the second phase needs to be completed. One of the things that I was thinking about, Mr. Munoz tweeted a photo of the boys soccer team the other night against Chipla and it was in the dark and so obviously they were playing at night and so, looking at the schedule, a lot of our games that we play in the Big Rivers Conference are at seven o'clock at night if they're away games. If they're games that we play at our home field, they're four or four-thirty at night. And done obviously to get the game done before the dark sets in. And, but when you think about repercussions on students from other districts and what we're asking them to do, we're asking them to pull their kids out of class early so that they can attend a soccer game just because we don't have lights in our district. I think that's, I don't think it's right from a stand, from an academic standpoint. You know, Hudson and some of these farther away schools, if they travel to Menominee, the students are asked to take them out of class early. So far, I don't think we've had any complaints from other districts regarding that, but I don't think that it's right for our district to add this facility and not have lights that we can have. And I, a couple of good points tonight, you know, about the JV players being able to be varsity team stacking those games so that if the situation arises, you have the athletes to finish the game out at the varsity level. So I would be in support of bringing this back for motion for approval at an export Anything else? I was wondering now, so looking at the whole project, Phase Two, and then we have Phase Three, which is going to be a very big chunk of money. So we're going to be looking at, all in all, with Phase One, Two, and Three, over $9 million into this project. That's quite a big money. And I'm concerned about, I think there are some things that we've put off in our curriculum because we didn't have the funds to do that. And middle school science was one, I remember, right? And so I'm wondering, you know, how are we going to balance our curricular educational needs or co-curricular needs? I guess, before you respond, Joe, I just have one thing, you know, we did hire another social work position this year and that if you take that position alone for a 10 or 15 year timeframe, that's enough money to fund the entire sports complex. And so what we're asking for here is one-time donations, it's not money that we're going to be asking for every year. I realize that they came to the board for $500,000 initially and now another $125,000 to $175,000, depending on the scope of the project. But it's still a bargain. When you look at what other districts and, and some much smaller districts have spent on sports complexes and take into account the donations that have been made by the community, which are outstanding, I compliment all the individuals and businesses that put money into this project and thank them wholeheartedly because truthfully, it's a, it's a district project that should have been funded solely by the district. The community saw the need, fundraised a substantial amount of money to go towards this project. And I think that was what initially swung myself in favor of sports complex was the donation, the large amount of donations from the community towards this project. So I think that where we are right now, I think we need to continue to move this forward and put the lights up or something.
I, I agree with Dave and, you know, I know it was brought up at the last meeting that, you know, what about our arts and whatever? We haven't had an organization come to us about the arts. The Boys and Girls Club came to the board and we allocated funds towards the Boys and Girls Club. Home Sweet Menominee came to the board, hopefully we'll allocate funds towards Home Sweet Menominee. This is another group that's getting really organized and getting the money that they need and coming to us again so we can get a top-notch facility for pennies on the dollar. I think that the board would be in support of anything. This is just a group that's, that's taken the initiative to make it happen, similar to the Boys and Girls Club and similar to Home Sweet Menominee. And I don't think it's playing favorites to athletics versus the arts, it's just an organized group of people. And how can we not support it when the community is not that supportive of it in itself?
Amy. Everybody knows how I feel about this, I just think that there was promises made in the very beginning about the money and that they were going to raise it all and not each extra dollar. So that to me is very important for the integrity of, of, you know, the district, for these people to say that and then come back again and ask for more money. So that's, that would be, that would be my other, my issue right there. Also, I just feel like it's pushing way too fast. I know you, you know, I've heard that everybody wants it by next spring, you know? Well, maybe they need to spend some more time raising money instead of trying to get the balance from us. That could be my opinion and that's, that's all I can say.
I think they're looking for the support part of it, Amy. I don't think they can go, feel comfortable to go ask people if they don't have the support of the school district. I'm just thinking if they would come to me and say, hey, would you give a couple hundred? Well, how does a school feel? Like, I guess I wouldn't really feel comfortable to have a group of families go and can ask for money and have money and then guess what happens at the end, that no, they don't get the support. So that's my only thing to go on with that one. That's why they need the time to be able to, to raise the funds for it.
I'm just glad that they're willing to raise the funds, seriously. I mean, it's taken a lot of burden off the district by them doing that and as a district, we're very thankful for those that have contributed and helped to fund this project. When it really is a district responsibility.
Okay, just a couple of follow-ups. In terms of delaying purchases like middle school science curriculum, I think Dan has a good point that we need to be mindful about our curriculum needs, but I, Brian, do you have any input on that? I mean, I, I think we've been keeping on track or actually ahead of track in our curriculum adoptions.
As far as the curriculum adoptions, I know we, we've updated and identified our review cycle, you know, we've been able to hit those. We did delay our elementary science resource study by one year. Actually, at the request of our staff due to capacity, we had an implementation of new math in ELA. So we did actually do our science instead of doing a full K-12 in one shot. We did nine-twelve and six-eight in two separate years, actually implemented those the same year. And we originally planned to do science the immediate year following, but because of our math and ELA adoptions and implementation in consultation with our staff and principals, we felt it was wise to delay that for one year, which we did. And now we're implementing those resources that we reviewed last year. So I do agree with Joe that we need to be mindful and keep tabs on where we have those needs. And one of the things that we have been able to do is identify, we've had, you know, unspent dollars at year end, you know, through a prioritization. Now, that's one of the ways that we addressed our math resources and adoption, so we've been able to, not resources, but our intervention tools. So I feel like, I feel like we've been hitting the mark on those as those needs have come forward and in some cases actually been a little more responsive to staff than we worried to probably six years ago.
And I think Amy's point about the original request, and I've been thinking a lot about it since the last meeting, trying to replay that all in my mind and I know that Jim Schmidt was here and he gave a real passionate plea to the board and I can remember everything that was said and I know Doug Larson had come and again, you know, talked about his involvement with the project and certainly we appreciate that. But I think it's important that the board know that, and really the community, that really this has just come forward as, as a question, as, you know, we've had so much success with Phase One from the district standpoint, is it something that we would want to look at? I also included for the board, and I see Coach Frank was able to make it, thanks for coming, I know you're busy with practice and games and everything, but I know Mr. Hunt had gotten some feedback from the coaches as well. And you've heard a lot of it already, but I think now that the complex is there and we have a better idea of how it can be used, I think we have a much better idea of what Phase Two is and why it's needed. So while there may have been, you know, a plea at the beginning, I certainly can see why some parents and coaches and even some students have talked about the need for Phase Two, I can understand why it's back in front of us.
The only thing I'll say from an academic side is that our kids have been very involved in science, Olympics, forensics, and music and there are tremendous opportunities in this district for any student that's interested in becoming involved in those type of programs. So I don't think that we're restricting those programs. To me, it's not a one or the other type of thing. I think if there are needs in other areas in the district, talk about it, you know, bring it out and let's have a discussion about those needs. We're addressing the social work position this year. We're addressing the social work position this year, and our collaboration with Stout on mental health and the stuff that we're doing there, I think is a real strong point for the district. But I think from the sports complex standpoint, I think we just need to, to me, when we're asking other districts to pull their kids out of class just to accommodate our building and our limitations that we have on site, I think that's a little bit much, and it's not right.
Jim?
I went back and looked through the records, and I found two letters, one from Mr. Munoz and one from Mr. Betcher. And one from Mr. Munoz says that he'd like to state as 100% however he's supportive for utilization of a one-time sum to district dollars to make the sports complex project high school reality. The other letter from Mr. Betcher says, we have an opportunity, if just as possible, to connect a one-time month sum of district dollars. The majority of funding for the complex would be left to the individual and corporate donors. One time.
Were they part of the?
One time.
For Phase One?
No, for the project.
Horsebound the project?
David, don't twist words. It says, for the project, one time, majority of funding left to individual and corporate donors. Great, go ahead, raise the money, and you got it, come see us. That's exactly what this is saying. It's exactly what they promised last time, and that's the promise they need to keep.
But at that time, we were contemplating Phase One of the project.
No, we were talking the whole entire project. They said we would not ask for a penny for Phase Two or Phase Three.
Were they part of the committee then?
Yes.
Well, most of the work on the fundraising was done by Jim Schmidt. Certainly, Mr. Munoz, the high school principal, was, kept a loop and involved. Mr. Betcher did work closely with a lot of the businesses as well. And I don't doubt that, Jim, I don't doubt that those letters aren't accurate. I'm sure they are.
They came from board decks.
Right. But I guess, like I said, I think, you know, it's definitely different today than it was at that time, knowing that, how much that complex is used and how much benefit there is. And I don't think things like, you know, the soccer game times and pulling kids out of class and things like that, I don't think that probably was even on any base radar at that time. So I can definitely understand your position, Jim, but I do also appreciate the concerns of the parents and coaches. And, yeah, it's not an easy decision.
I still look at the whole picture and the amount of money that was raised by the community and how better off the district was to have a lot of this funded by the community, not coming out of district dollars, irregardless of if it was a one-time donation or six hundred thousand dollars or six fifty.
I have no problem with them raising the money. They just need to raise all of it.
Yeah, I was shocked that Hudson, you know, went there for the football game Friday, and right away, I texted her superintendent and I said, how much for this stadium? And it was 5.7 million. And it's something else.
The standard weight, so I don't think that a lot into that.
Right. So I do think that the opportunity that we have to partner with the community and not fully funded from the district, I do think is a good opportunity. But I do understand Jim's concern.
I just want to address something you said, David, about the social worker, that we have to pay that for a long time to come. Actually, we could use probably three or four more social workers. I've heard she's doing a very good job, but she's very, it's a lot that she has to do right now. And I was told by somebody in this community that we even have a health crisis in our district. And so the way I look at it is, maybe we need to hire two more social workers. I don't know.
The only thing I was trying to point out was to differentiate between one-time money and continuing.
I understand. So what I'm saying is, is, you know, we have kids who have mental health crises. I think that takes a lot more precedence over some of the money that we want, that somebody wants to send to the, for the sports complex.
Well, I see it as almost a continuing situation because we're facing Phase Three here in a couple of years. And that's going to be a big chunk of money.
We don't have to see Phase Three. That can be ten years down the road. This didn't have to happen now, but the community has spoken, and they want to try and move forward with it, and they want to know, do they have the district's support or not yet?
So are we going to get a promise that Phase Three will be ten years down the road?
No, I can't promise that neither can anyone else. But if they can get 50% of the funds together and bring it forward, and we have a little excess money in the budget, it's not working out.
It's again, you know, it's going to be a continuing.
But I think, I still think we need to look at the whole picture. It's not, it's not like if we spend money on sports, we're not spending money on anything else. Sports to some kids is therapy and helps with mind and body and things like that. And so to me, it's all, it's all one big picture, and I think we need to look at it that way. If we can take care of this problem, and then if we need to address more on the mental health side down the road, then this will be it. But I don't think that, I don't like pitting, you know, always pitting one group against another and try and cause division. I think we need to bring people together on this and get it done and move on.
I agree, you know, we don't want to pit one group against another. But, you know, when we're, we have teachers being told that they can have certain things, you know, because there's no money in the budget, and we have to look at where, what's happening. So that's my position. We need to take care of our academic needs first and then look at it.
Such as, you know, from a teacher's perspective?
What's not being met, Dan?
That's a good question.
What's not being met?
Well, I've heard, you know, I think that middle school science is, needs to be looked at. I've heard some people say that they need, really need some stuff in that, that middle school, so.
Brian, do you know anything about that?
Not at the time. We're in year three of a new resource in there. If there's something specific, we can take a look and.
I know we just, I know we just bought new chemical storage, not shelves, but locking.
Cabinetry.
Yeah, cabinetry. I don't know if anyone's seen any requests that hasn't been met.
Okay.
I'd say if you know specific things, get it to Joe.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Just one more thing. I just want to remind you that originally, this was a 3.2 million dollar project, and they wanted to do everything. They wanted to have their own football stadium there. They wanted it not to be at Stout. Okay? So who's to say that they're not going to try to keep going with that? Now, I know I heard Joe say last, or two weeks ago, that that's no intention. We're still going to keep the Stout football field. Well, I hope that's true, because I can tell you, these people out there are, keep wanting to go further and further and further and further until they have that stadium.
But did we just pay a lump sum for 10 years for having at the Stout? I mean, wasn't just a, wasn't just a small chunk for the replacement at the time, but wasn't it a 10-year commitment that, I mean, initially, I thought it was 10,000, for example, for just that replacement? But we did 125 or whatever, for 10 years. So to me, that shows long-term commitment and that. And I agree with the football. I'd love to see it, you know, football at the high school. But if it was opportunity and partnership with Stout, the big talk that we're, I've heard about is partnerships, you know, business as an industry. And, you know, to me, that's a great partnership. Why not have it? And if high school is happy at Stout, then I guess that's the prerogative.
I can tell you, too, that one time when I was on the school board, I think we were all on the flight at one time, to go to a football game and sit in the grandstand with the chancellor. This was when Chancellor Storson was chancellor. And when I got up there, the guy from Advancement, I can't remember his name right off the bat, took me aside and said, what's this I hear about you guys wanting to build your own football stadium? And when I told him at that time, I was against it, but I said, I can't speak with the board and only one board member. But I think a lot of that reason for them inviting us to do that was because they wanted to make sure that they still could partner with us on that. So just letting you know.
Well, I can tell you, even as beautiful as Hudson's 5.7 million dollar stadium is, I would take Williams Stadium every day of the week over that. I was share, on the radio, we were sharing the press box with the coaches from Monominee. I mean, this is one small example, but, I mean, the press box at Williams Stadium is amazing. There's bathrooms up there. There's just one small piece to it. So as far as I'm concerned, I think varsity football at Williams Stadium is right where it needs to be. I don't see it as a negative thing, though, that some people like the idea of it at the high school. And I certainly don't begrudge people for raising money on behalf of our kids.
I believe it, but raise it, raise it and then do the work. And there's still babies too, and that's what I think.
I guess what is it going to take for us to maybe use some sort of an initial vote on this? Because we're going to just keep beating this dead horse, meeting after meeting, person after person. You know, how do we move forward?
I'd like to bring a bad vex meeting for a vote, and, right? So we can move on, one way or the other.
So do you want me to word it like the sample that I provided in board docs?
I guess I'm fine with that, Joe.
Okay.
Nope, I think we've had a good discussion. Let's move on. James, strategic planning update.
So the survey's out, and we've had several people take the strategic planning survey already. This is the two-week window. I'll be sending another reminder to families. So hopefully, we'll continue to get good participation there. Also, thank you to Brian and his work with Studer in putting together the draft schedule for listening sessions. A couple of things with the listening sessions, in talking, Dan and I had a couple of conversations. We want to make sure that the board understands that when it says that students will be selected, the idea is that there'll be a random selection of the students. It's not going to be just cherry pick for certain groups or activities. So there will be a random selection of students, and they will get permission. If a parent doesn't want their child to participate, you know, there'll be another random selection there. But also, in talking with Studer today, we're going to open up a survey window during those listening session time periods for students. And students will actually be able to use the digital survey as well. We just want to make sure that if any student that wants to participate will have the opportunity. A student could come to the community listening session, but we also understand that could be a little daunting for some. It also could be difficult with their schedule. So we've expanded that a little bit, and we think that'll be an improvement. But I wanted to get any other feedback the board might have on the strategic planning process as we continue to move forward.
So on the schedule where it says students selected, those are all randomly selected, then?
Correct.
You're basically drawing a line ahead?
Somewhat. I mean, there'll be probably a certain number of students at each grade level, and then from that grade level pool, there'll be a randomly selected group.
And we're covering all different abilities and special ed and regular students and socioeconomic and all of that?
The difficulty with randomness is that there's no guarantee how many of each category that you mentioned could be in there. If we purposely selected, we could make sure there was certain representation from certain groups, but it's just going to be a broad random selection. However, like I mentioned, there will be the survey available as well for anybody who wants to take the survey.
Well, that makes it fair enough, you know, the high school can do the survey. That helps a lot. Because I didn't think there was a lot of time for them, especially if they were selected, so that's good. Because they're older and adults, and they may have, you know, closer to adults, and so they may have some better ideas, you know, for their sampling.
And that brings up a clarification, too. The survey will only be available six through 12. We're not planning on making it available at the elementary level. And that was one of the recommendations from Studer. And I do want to point out at the high school level, there also will be one open listening session for any student who wants to come in during lunchtime and share openly, even if they're not selected.
They're still doing listening sessions with the undergrads, just not the open survey.
Correct.
Do you have a timeframe on the survey? Do they have a minute, how long it takes to complete it, do they say?
I would say, I would say probably between 10 and 15 minutes. You haven't taken it yet, have you?
No, I have not.
Yeah, I didn't think it took that long, actually. Maybe it just got so gross in the questions and.
You were having so much fun.
I think, I think people who are more familiar with the district, it may take, it may be quicker. And also, people very, you know, not very familiar with the district, it may be quicker. The people who know a little bit about it, it may take them longer to try to think about what the survey is asking.
I was just curious for the students, you know, to be able to complete it in time, you know, so.
I would think they'll be pretty quick, yeah. Anything else on the strategic planning? We're making good progress, and I appreciate everyone's input.
All right, review of ex-curricular staff contract requests.
This is a standard report. Unless there's any questions, I think Dan can move on.
Questions? All right, items related to board committees, reports, and the next meeting dates.
Just a reminder about the homecoming parade. There will be a car for board members. I think, Jim, you were planning to be in there, Penny and Heather. The lineup happens at the leisure center, and maybe I want to read the letter here that was provided for Dan. Lineup starts at 3:30. The parade starts at 4 o'clock. It's a little bit of an alternate route this year because of the road construction. I know that's been posted on Twitter and the district website, and I see the police department put out a little map of all that, too. It's going to start at the leisure center and end by Wilson Park. So 3:30 lineup, 4 o'clock, the parade starts, and it's not supposed to rain. Dan, if I may, just one other thing, and I actually posted it in Board Superintendent Communications, but it would fit under here as well. Just today, we received the board self-assessment survey from the School Board Association. And each of you should have received that. Jamie, did we pass those out?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to pass it out. Dan and I had a conversation about that. The idea would be that board members would complete that survey by the end of, what do we say, Dan? September? That's this week.
That's right.
We'll do a check-in against next meeting, but if you could do it sometime over the next few weeks, and then.
They say we got until June 30, but let's get it done by before the next board meeting.
That would be great.
That's the, for the deadline to use the code.
Yeah.
We might want to be at Center of Virginia or something.
Right, so the idea was get it done in the next few weeks. And then you could schedule retreat sometime in November or December to review the results. And it'll be nice this year because there'll be a little longitudinal data. I don't remember Al Brown talking about that. Because we have enough years, we'll be able to see some trends. October 8th would be great.
Any other questions?
I will change that in board docs right now.
What was it?
October 8th. I will change that in board docs right now.
I guess one of the surveys is done.
Okay. We will be moving into closed session now.